We can do to help the youth in action out.
All right.
All right.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its existence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, there you go. Welcome, Mr. Turner.
Thank you, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Judge.
Here.
Commissioner Akmeier.
Here.
Commissioner Meeks.
Here.
Commissioner Dogger.
Here.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
All right. Need approval of minutes of meeting held on June first, two thousand and twenty-one? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. All right, so moved. All right, so visitors this evening. We have Airport Management, Brett Parrott. You guys wanna go ahead and address the council? It's your, you're up already.
We're up, we're number one of the way here. Good evening, I'm Brett Parrott, this is Jake Ryan, we're co-owners of Skytrain Aviation. We provide training aircraft for student pilots and current pilots based out of the Mount Carmel airport. Thank you, Mayor Judge, City Manager Turner, and the commissioners for allowing us to speak and present a proposal. I think everyone has a copy of the proposal, of the contract, so I won't bore you go white, bore you by going line by line, so we'll get right into a brief introduction of what we're thinking. And go from there. I'll, probably something to keep it short and sweet. Airport partial privatisation by Skytrain Aviation, what exactly does that mean? The short version of the city of Mount Carmel was still on the airport. Its land, its buildings, its runways, and all of its equipment. Everything that is the airport would remain the properties of the city of Mount Carmel. Any future additions or expansions funded by the Federal Airport Improvement Program would become property of the city of Mount Carmel without any cost to the city of Mount Carmel. Skytrain Aviation would manage all operations and maintenance, be responsible for and complying with all FAA state aeronautical regulations, and assume the liability and safety requirements of operating a public airport. Skytrain Aviation would be responsible for assuring all airport property, including the liability insurance of its operations. The city would still have all the benefits of owning a public airport without the administrative and regulatory burden, costs, liability of operating such a public aeronautical facility. All current employees would remain at the airport. All current agreements, contracts made by the airport would be honored. Myself and Jake, with our other business, Artic Response, we've used the Mount Carmel Airport for many years as pilots with business and travels. We've flown to many different airports across the country, and we've been proud to call the Mount Carmel Airport our home base. The, not only has this been a key factor in our decision to want to progress the airport into the future, we found that it's one of the better operated aeronautical facilities in the Midwest. We've witnessed the many improvements made by past manager Ken Wood over the last few decades, and the even more improvements that Chad Hill, current manager, has made to the airport in the last few years. We think we can take that progress even further into the future, where it not only benefits the airport more, but also the city of Mount Carmel. After all, this is the city of Mount Carmel's airport, so we won't, we'll not forget that. Over the years, we've made many good business, investor contacts. A lot of folks don't really understand what are the most important things an airport actually does. You know, it's not, you know, it's a place for aircraft to take off to land, air and fuel up, a place for area passengers to arrive and depart, but not only that, it's a doorway to your community. It's the first thing that air travelers see of your community, first impressions can be everything. It's how business developers, investors, and entrepreneurs travel through your city. If you're able to have as much money in business, in a very competitive world, those folks don't have time to drive many hours to and from to develop or invest in the projects on there. They like to visit, observe, and deal face to face, and flying is the quickest, most efficient way for them to do this. With our business contacts, we think we can bring more business into the airport and to the Mount Carmel community. We'd like to be able to present that first good impression, create a more improved doorway to Mount Carmel that could produce additional investment, and importantly, more jobs for the Mount Carmel area. We understand the true benefit of more jobs, that leads to an even better community forever. With airport privatisation, we think it's a first good step forward to the future of the airport and the city of Mount Carmel. Mr. Bayor, we'll send you back to you for further discussion or questions.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for these gentlemen?
Not right now.
Well, I, I guess, you know, it's not really a question, I guess, the, as I looked at it, I, you know, you guys brought this to us, I think that's, and it does sound like a good business plan on your side. My heartburn with it's the farmland. You know, that's a, probably the city's greatest asset that we own, and to give that up for a fifty-year lease, there's a lot of heartburn to that, or, I think it was fifty years, I believe.
It was.
And the cash rent that comes off of that. I know why you guys would want it to have, that operate, we use that money in that aspect, but I guess that's where I would probably sit with the most heartburn to give up control of our, I look at, I mean, it's a multimillion dollar asset that we, we own, so, in that area. I mean, it's some of the best farmland in the, in the area from my understanding, so.
Six hundred and eighty acres, I believe, six forty.
So that, that's my only, that'd be my, my main hurdle for me.
Absolutely, that's a good question. We don't have no intention of changing that contract, that money has to be pumped back into the airport. It's not something that, you know, I think the current contract is like two years.
Yeah, every couple of years.
Same type of contract, be open for bids, obviously look for the highest. The other aspect of that is that, and I'll use this as a hypothetical example, and I'll pick on a company we all know, let's just say Amazon. And I'm not saying this is gonna happen, so don't get this wrong, get the wrong impression, but I'm not saying it can't happen either. But let's say Amazon needed ten acres for a micro-distribution center, and they wanted to hire seventy-five to a hundred employees, which we would direct that job, refer it to the city of Mount Carmel, because it is the city of Mount Carmel's airport. We would need the control to be able to say, we can make that deal work, and then the time amount involved is that, for something like that to happen, it may take a few years, well, that eats away at a smaller period of years. You know, we may not be able to get something to happen for ten years, so, well, business has to work fast, it's very competitive. I'm sure everyone here, when they first ran for office, thought, you know, I wanna get that road paved, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, I'm gonna get this done next week or next month, and you find out inherently the system is a delay. It's everything takes a while, you gotta run to that red tape. Business doesn't like that. They like to go to one source and say, we need this, make it happen. So we need that room, that time, and that ability to adjust that as things happen, and that's why it's built in like that. But I understand that completely.
But what happens if we need that land before that fifty years is up?
As far as?
Anything.
Well, I think their point is that since it's an opportunity zone, one of the rare opportunity zones in southern Illinois, especially southeastern Illinois, and if something would come up where we would need to, you know, take some of that land for that because of it, you know, which I know you guys are looking at the same thing, but.
Or, or, or sell off.
I mean, you.
You can't sell any of that ground up there. Cause if we do, we lose the airport.
But we can hedge it against the loan, right?
Huh?
But we can use it as collateral.
No. We can't use it, it's an enterprise. It's all.
Okay.
Separate.
That changes things.
Yeah.
So in other words, we couldn't put that money in our pocket, has to be pushed back into the airport. As a matter of fact, everything the airport produces has to be pushed back into the airport.
Right.
So fuel sales, hair rent, cash rip on the land, if it's something we can weave into the contract, and we can talk about that, where you could do that, people will look at that.
Yep.
So you guys will be on a not-for-profit basis?
Well, any business is for profit, so where we would win ahead with this is that whatever deals we could make with whatever companies, we would get a percentage of that. So facilitators fee, so what we call, you know, percentage of production, so that's our incentive to go, it's actually our incentive to go out and to throw business in. So to be able to sit here in front of you now, costs us maybe thousands of dollars just to do the development, the forest, the investigation, the talking, the lawyer fees, so this is not something our cash cow is Artic Response, that's where we make our money. This is something we think we can develop for the future, and the whole community can benefit from.
And we'd also like to expand our training down there. We're looking at, also buying another airplane, looking for instructors, and we're like, we really wanna boost that, which is gonna, you know, bring more people down there and stuff like that. We'd love to get, have a maintenance shop down there on field, and have a guy do maintenance, and they'll bring airplanes in, buy fuel, and stuff like that.
How many total acres do we have in farmland up there? Is it the four hundred and seventy-one listed in the, in the proposal? Is that the total amount, or is there additional? So is that the whole?
That is what is on file, that's what the land title got.
Yeah.
So is it, is it possible to not do all of the farmland, but do, or how is that?
It depends on how the contract with the US government reads, as far as the city of Mount Carmel having such use of the property.
I, I'm not worried about that so much after finding out that I didn't understand the whole enterprise thing, to, so, I mean, I don't know if that matters enough, we gotta kinda decide as a council whether or not we wanna just go down this road as a whole, as a whole or not.
Right.
Chad, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but what do you think, you're up there every day?
Firstly, I think that as far as progressing the airport forward, partnering with Skytrain would help the airport do that. As we all know, you know, being a municipality, there's a, there's a certain level you can go, you know, on, on some of the things we do up there. You know, an airport can't own an airplane, I mean, that's just what it is. Basically, our FBO, all we do is sell oil and fuel in our hangars, that's it. With partnering with them, letting them manage everything, that means they can take that FBO, manage the hangar rent, the, all that, then on top of that, have a service center, have a possible brokerage firm for selling airplanes, which would then, you know, don't get me wrong, Skytrain will make money off of that, but that's gonna bring in more people, more businesses, bring in more businesses, bring in more businessmen. They're gonna come to Mount Carmel, they're gonna eat, they're gonna see what, what you guys are doing in the city of Mount Carmel, and that could spark interest for future investments for, for the city of Mount Carmel.
How many, how many farmable acres are up there?
Right now, the contract is showing five hundred and twenty-two farmable acres.
That's what Ivors farms right now, five twenty?
That's what Ivors farms right now. You gotta understand, there's a lot of that acreage, which is in between runways that are what we call our safety zones, and those, let me stand up so we can see, those areas there, we can't develop in there anyway. There's a lot of that acreage that you cannot.
That's what I was gonna say.
I got an airport layout plan up there that, you go to the center of the runway, you go out so many feet, you can't build anything except a taxi plane. And then you have very limited acres which you can actually do something with. So, I mean, I know there's a concern with the farm ground, you really, I mean, there's a very limited portion of that farm ground that can even be used for development, so.
You know, at one point, we looked at, talking with Chad, about a solar farm and stuff like that, and where that would have benefited the, the airport is similar to what these guys are talking about, but a different way. The, the, it would take up farm ground, but on the backside of it, the airport would receive funds for the rental of the area, the lease agreement, but also, they would benefit with the electricity and stuff like that, that they currently use. What these guys, like I said, are looking at, from my reading of everything, is, a big key to it is, it's an airport in an opportunity zone. And they're willing to put skin in the game to try to draw things to not only the airport area, but the city of Mount Carmel, which we're not able to do. But anyways.
Is, is like fifty-year lease, is there a purpose for that?
A fifty-year?
Yeah.
A lot of it is from just dealing with big companies, we dealt with a lot of big companies, they, they wanna secure their investment. So if they lay down millions of dollars to do something, they like one stop. So it's more like, you know, if we're gonna do this, we're gonna be here for twenty-five, thirty years, you know, and if we don't have a good chunk of time to secure that in those deals, councils change, you know, they don't wanna have to come back in fifteen years and renegotiate this whole investment. I've heard war stories across the nation, but that hasn't worked. So that they learned their lessons quickly, and that's why that's took such a long time.
Thank you, basically, for saying that makes the area more appetizing for a business to come in.
Absolutely, and every little piece of appetizing that you can add to the pie is very important.
And also, another thing that, I don't know, I can't remember if it's in the agreement or not, but on their board of directors, there would be a seat from a representative of the city of Mount Carmel. Correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
And anything we do and expand will be in direct contact with the city. It's not like, oh, guess what's coming tomorrow, that we'll, we'll work with everybody on that.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, I, I came in thinking, no, breeding it, no, but I didn't realize a couple of different things, so, not really for sure. It's, uh.
This is something to be presented, you guys to mull over, and then we can pick back up in two weeks.
Okay, so we're not voting tonight?
Not voting tonight, no.
Okay, that's good.
No, no. So, they wanted to come present what they had sent us, and, you know, we can think about it, we have any other questions, we'll reach out to you guys.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll have questions, because, like I said, I was a no before, like, just reading the stuff, and now I'm on the fence, so.
Yeah, even when we first dove into this, if you just, you know, trying to understand how it all worked and everything, this is a very new thing in the United States of America that's been, has to be able to do, so.
We looked at every reason, looked to get what's the gotcha, so, couldn't find that, so that's why we're here.
Okay.
Before I even brought, they'd come to me, oh, around December timeframe, and before I even brought anything to the mayor, or at the time, Rudy, I spent two months researching, trying to find things that, okay, what's that, what's that one thing gonna stand out there that, you know, is not, that the city of Mount Carmel is not going to benefit from? Or, more importantly, I was looking at the personnel up there, myself, and, and guys at, the people at work with me up there, and just, there really wasn't anything out there. I mean, everything that you look forward, the opportunities for investments and companies, and just the different things, like I said earlier, I think it really greatly benefited the airport and, and city of Mount Carmel, Malvash County, it's all.
So what happens to Chad in two years?
In two years?
After you take over, I mean.
He would remain.
I mean, who has that decision?
What do you mean?
Making, to keep or hire employees?
Yeah, their board. And something else that goes along with this, since it's still owned by the city and regulated through the city and the federal government as an airport, they are still open to all municipal and aeronautical grants still through the city.
Okay.
So they don't lose any of that, so how Chad has done with the equipment and things like that out there, all of that will still continue, it's just.
My job actually won't change as far as managing the airport side, I will gain extra responsibility as far as on the business side of things, of trying to go out and get business and help with that, in that matter.
And still, there's, even though if, with them, they still will have, like, like, when I talked about the grants, all that still has to get our approval before applied for and stuff like that, since it's our name that we're stamping on the paperwork.
So just, maybe a dumb question, but I don't actually take care of the airport, you know, so, all the money we get from the farmland today goes back into the airport already, right?
Hundred percent of it.
Okay.
It is a hundred percent self-supporting.
Yeah.
And it has been for probably the last decade.
Yeah.
And see, you know, like, at one time, Ken Wood did flight training and stuff like that, Chad made a point where the airport can't own a, a plane.
Right.
Well, they used Ken's plane, and Ken taught lessons, well, the city of Mount Carmel or the airport per se never saw any revenue off of that.
Right.
Because it was private lessons.
Mm-hmm.
And that's something that they're looking at, bringing.
They would make money on, we wouldn't make money anyway, cause we wouldn't be going down that road anyway.
Right. Yep, so.
Well, that's when Brent touched on, you know, you wouldn't have to worry about the financial side of the city part, paying, you know, on the managing side, payroll and, you know, balance and checkbooks and all that kinda stuff, that all would go away.
Yep, so.
Okay.
Okay, something that we can bring back up in two weeks.
Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Nope, we're good.
My suggestion is maybe hand out the papers the day you do the presentation, cause the presentation is totally different than what I read. Just, just some feedback.
Okay. Or at least the way we, it read to me, too, is a little bit different, so.
And that's just a human written paper, you know what I'm saying?
Perception.
Just the perception, yeah, good.
You guys got copies of the contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I just think it's a lot to take in.
Yeah, I understand that, it is.
Type, type thing, okay. Thanks, guys.
All right, so we'll bring it back up in two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
If you guys have any questions on the airport side of things, I mean, the mayor can answer most of those, but there are some things that you'd wanna talk to me about, I mean, don't, don't hesitate, come up there and check things out, and, and give me a call. If I don't know the answer, I will definitely find out the answer.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Chad, thank you, gentlemen. All right. You don't have to stay if you don't want to, or you can, we can bore you to death the rest of it, so, all right, all right, moving on to communications, all right. Start out my report, not, I've never been able to give two presents out in two meetings total.
I'm sorry, Thomas, not for you.
Oh.
Come here, Mr. Turner. City Manager Turner. This is Ryan's first meeting as city manager and city clerk. He served the Mount Carmel Police Department for twenty years and six months, I guess that's what your wife told me.
Yeah, she's correct. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say different anyhow.
That's right, so, she knows her stride.
Yes.
Anyways, and you recently retired after that service, and we really appreciate your service and your dedication to the city of Mount Carmel. So you weren't here the last meeting.
Right.
And so.
Lees, I believe it was, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Saint John's.
Saint, uh, pretty close.
Yeah.
County Commissioners in Lees.
So anyways, upon the city of Mount Carmel and, or commissioners.
They had a car chase, so Mike had the lead.
Oh, is that what it was? He's supposed to be there for this presentation, but, thank you very much.
All right, I appreciate it.
I meant, don't just leave, I mean, just to be bold. You gotta open it.
I don't want you to wait till you get home and go, oh, wow, thanks, guys.
You didn't make Rudy open anything.
Well.
You know, I'm surprised Justin can wrap so well.
It was really Brooks you wrapped it, no? No, with Rudy, I told him to wrap it, and they put it in a bag, and yours, I said, just put it in a bag, and they wrapped it, so.
So is this a roadblock or is it a, a box?
Well.
Open it up.
I appreciate it. Oh, it really does, okay. Well, thank you, guys.
You gotta read, oh, pull it out, read it. My gosh.
Making this hard, isn't it, Ryan?
I went to all this trouble.
Without breaking it.
Yeah, without breaking it or something.
On the back.
Yeah. Something I'm sure Carissa can find space for.
CPD Chief Brian Turner, thank you for twenty years of, and six months of service, twenty-four, so.
Yay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Should've said, congratulations, I should've said, congratulations on dealing with not so nice people for twenty years.
Well, I appreciate it, you gentlemen, the council.
Now, to work up to the, the clock that we gave Rudy, you gotta be here for a very long time.
No, that's fine.
So.
Twenty, twenty-four, twelve years, fifteen?
Yeah, something like that, so, anyways.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. All right, back to my report. Wanna congratulate Kyle Bus and the Mount Carmel High School softball team on how well they did this year, you made us proud girls, and even your dance moves made YouTube and a lot of hits, I guess, so, anyways, we salute you guys on your season, you'd had a great season, and the Mount Carmel High School wrestling team has done very well also. American Recovery Act money, they're doing two payments, we should, we'll be applying for ours here this week, we thought it was gonna be something that they just sent us, but apparently, they, again, it's the government, they changed the rules, so, we should be getting around four hundred and thirty thousand this month from that, and then we will see what the guidelines tell us, what we can spend it on and what we can't spend it on. Wanna congratulate the council on purchasing the, how do you put this, the ugliest property in Mount Carmel. Last Thursday, Commissioner, or not Commissioner Turner, City Clerk Turner, and I went, and along with Mr. Waldrop, and signed on the Snap-on property. What I'd like from council tonight is, we got initial quotes on clearing the trees and leveling the soil, and I'd like to get council's approval to go out to bid on that, to get that property cleared and presentable.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Commissioner Meeks makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second, go ahead.
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Zimmerman, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Thank you very much, don't know exactly what we're gonna do with the property yet, but our first initial is to get it cleaned up, and then get it enrolled into a Brownsfield EPA cleanup. It has already passed a stage one, stage two was not completely finished on the property, but it's close, and once we get it cleared, I'll come back to council after we kinda get an estimate of what we're looking at for the remediation of that property. Bathrooms in the city park coming along nicely, Mr. Easter and his crew have been out there putting in some pea gravel, and hopefully, we will be pouring some concrete in the next few days, tomorrow morning, Commissioner Dogger can talk about the rest of where that concrete's gonna go, but anyways, but yeah, it's coming along nicely, and we're excited to see the bathrooms, they got the first two levels of block laid, and the plumbing's done to a point, so hopefully, hopefully in the next thirty days, it'll be completed. So, anyways, that is my report. Commissioner Meeks.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if anybody's been down College Drive today, but maybe too late now, but they got flags on both sides of the street, I don't know if you've had a chance to see them, Doug, you probably saw them, pretty impressive, I thought, that doesn't bring tears to your, well, I didn't actually break down and cry, but seeing that many American flags in rows still makes, gives me a little bit of hope.
It's a beautiful sight, wasn't it?
It was, yes. Continuing to mo' city property, I know David, we, we got a brush, new brush cutter on the way, supposedly, if it gets in. Worked on water maintenance department, replacing twenty feet of sanitary sewer pipe in the nine hundred block of Cedar Street, repaired some stormwater intakes, worked with the water maintenance on installing three hundred feet of that sanitary sewer pipe at the city park for the bathrooms you mentioned, Mayor. Continue to fix little problems that pop up at the pool, the pool has been open, and according to the mayor, the attendance has been pretty good.
Yes.
Cleaned intakes during and after the rains, took three trucks to the safety lane, and one of them, you said, barely made it, okay, and they got a couple loads of asphalt from Ambra, Ambra Asphalt. Into my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Meeks, Commissioner Akmeier.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, past two weeks, we've had receipts in the general fund of just over two hundred and fifty-five thousand, and expenditures of sixty-four thousand. Of those receipts, uh, mostly state-related, uh, sales tax ninety-seven thousand, which up from recent months. Uh, income tax a hundred and seven thousand, again up. Um, state use tax twenty-four, utility tax just under four. The big number, um, sixteen thousand from video gaming, and I was told that that would be up. We're, we budgeted sixty thousand for the year in revenue, and we're what, a month? A month and a half in, and we're at twenty-nine thousand, so video gaming appears to be hot and heavy in the city of Mount Carmel. So I guess stimulus money has worked, um, but, uh.
Oh, my God, he actually said it.
I shouldn't have said that. Um, but anyway, uh, end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Akmeyer. Commissioner Dogger.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so the new water plant is still in preparations, and we should be going to bid this summer. They worked on getting the pool chemicals, uh, correctly for opening day, um, and to what Tom said, the pool has been packed. I think my kids have been there multiple times already, and, uh, are, are big fans of the new city, or the new pool manager.
Yep.
Doing a great job. Um, we do have a chemical pump that isn't working. We need to look at the water plant. Um, we need to look at replacement or repair. Um, it's going to be under a thousand bucks both ways. So Keith will make that decision here this week and figure out what we need to do. Uh, maintenance department, speaking of the extra concrete, um, finally, now that COVID is over, we are, we are getting that water fountain installed on Oak Street. So it's going to be across from the college, uh, apartments. And, uh, it's going to, it's going to be real nice. It should, I think you guys are doing the concrete on Wednesday?
Tomorrow.
No, I thought you were doing the park.
Doing them both.
Your bowl tomorrow.
Yes, both of them at the same time.
Man, all right. So that'll, that'll be done, and then they'll set the, uh, water tower on top as soon as that's ready. Um, so be looking for that. Uh, sewer plant, um, it's always something. We finished up about three and a half million dollars worth of upgrades, and nothing has to be done tomorrow, but, um, the I E P A regulations just keep coming out at cities, and, uh, something we had to look at was a phosphorus discharge optimization plan and biologics removal plan. And there's a lot of, uh, things we have to look over and figure out what we need to do, and there's multiple options to have things done by twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, or twenty thirty-five even. So more to come on that. Nothing happening tomorrow, um, but it's always something with, uh, regulations. Um, and then they had some emergency plumbing they had to conduct down there at the college, um, lift station. End of my report.
I have a, I have a question, uh, the water fountain, are there, is there going to be a, a roof over that of any type?
No.
So you don't think it's going to be a bird roost, or, I know they hit my truck pretty hard.
No, no.
So it's going to be just sitting out there?
Yes.
No roof, okay.
Yes.
Be too hot for the birds.
I asked, well, I was out there the other day, and there were three guys there, and I asked them, and they said they didn't have any idea, so I thought, well, I want to ask the guy that knows. Okay.
Does it got a, it's got a dog?
It has a dog, it has a dog fountain on the bottom.
Yep.
And then actually two different spots on top for human consumption.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, it, it'll be a nice addition.
Pooper scooper by the water fountain, I guess?
No. I think that's down the road.
Maybe we can ask the.
But it will be nice, I mean, huh?
Ask the shelter buddies to put one of those.
One thing that we will, we will have to look at, and, uh, and I don't mind to do it, but, um, uh, just, and it may just be me that does it, but we do need to, uh, probably wipe that down every night, so as I drive by, wipe it down with some Clorox wipes or, you know, something like that. But it will be a big asset to all the runners that we have here in town.
Does it have the water bottle refill, or is it just going to have just a water fountain?
Just a water fountain.
Okay.
We looked at that, and it wasn't.
But we'll have those with the new bathrooms in the park.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Zimmerman.
Um, thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, we're going to start with, we're going to go backwards. So we're going to start with the garbage first. Um, last week was the first week of the new route collection. Um, there were a few little minor hiccups, but overall, the majority of the residents put their trash out. It was picked up. Um, Republic did make, um, tra- they came back by through, uh, last week on a couple of days for those that they did miss. They are replacing trash cans. If you need a trash can, a new tote, just call up City Hall and we'll get you a new tote. A couple people have, you know, had theirs destroyed and things like that, or if you just need an extra one with trash only being picked up once a day, and you can't take your trash someplace else, if you forgot to take yours out, um, just ask for a second tote, so call up here and request that. Um, with garbage goes recycling. Um, recycling is still an issue. Um, we love to have that program, um, but it, it's kind of hard to do. Um, it fills up very quickly. So one of the things that we have done to make it look more presentable is, once the recycling bins are full or, you know, practically full, we have gone ahead and locked the gates so that the trash doesn't pile up around and, and not look nice. Um, we have spoken, um, City Clerk Turner, um, informed me that we have spoken with Re- Republic, and they are going to do a better job of coming and, um, switching things out. Once things are full, they'll be able to, to empty those a little quicker, and they promised to do that within a twenty-four hour time period. So the lockdown period will not be as long, hopefully, so fingers crossed on that one. Also, another reminder is, when you bring your recyclables, that go ahead and dump them, um, take them out of the bag and dump them into the containers. Um, do not put the plastic bag at all. So you've got to empty out your bags that you bring down, um, or they won't take those either. Um, fire calls, um, in the last two weeks, there's been a total of eight calls. Four of those have been medical assists. One was a CO alarm, um, and then there was also a small structure fire where a lawnmower had, had caught fire. Um, and luckily, the neighbors walking by caught it pretty quickly, so there wasn't extensive damage. Um, and then finally, we had our guns and hoses game yesterday. Um, there was a great crowd. Um, it started out with different game, there were four different games that took place, with of course, the guns and hoses game finishing up at the end. Um, the other winners, First Midbank, um, won over Wabash General Hospital. Beeler's Biolo beat Church of Christ. Mount Carmel Public Utility won over Edward Jones. And with two minutes and thirty-seven seconds left of the game, the guns and hoses were tied at thirty-six. Um, the, um, gun, or the hoses finally went ahead in the last seventeen seconds of the game, and the guns were not able to tie that up, so in, you know, I guess, I can't really say victory, but we're going with, since I'm representing fire tonight, yeah. Um, sorry, chief.
Again.
Yeah, I know. So, um, the hoses did win, thirty-eight to thirty-six yesterday, and the main thing is that it is a fundraiser. And Roger Rodriguez, we, he does a phenomenal job of putting this on, organizing it, so a huge thank you to Rod for continuing to do that, and over, um, around a thousand dollars was raised yesterday, and that money this year will go to Merchants Park. So that is the guns and hoses for this year, so that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioners Zimmerman. Mr. Turner.
All right, uh, thanks again for the, the clock, everyone. It's been a very interesting week. Uh, I've got to see a lot of different things within the city, and I don't think anyone really knows how much Rudy did until you get into that position. Uh, I've dealt with everything from trash and more trash at cities like, and abatements, uh, acquiring properties. So once again, I'd just like to tell the board, thank you for allowing me to do this job. Um, I'm looking forward to it. To, I do want individuals to know, though, that the trash recycling, it got to a point that it was so bad that the trash was overflowing, um, and that's not on Republic's, that's not Republic's fault, nor is that the city's fault. Individuals were really abusing the recycling program, dumping trash, styrofoam trash along the, the, down at the recycling plant, and that required, then requires city workers to take time away from their job to clean up trash that should have never been there in the first place. So just bear with everybody at City Hall, because we're trying to work through this, and got to remember with all the softball games and everything that goes on down there, some, sometimes the first thing people see is our city garage on that side of town, and with all the trash, it was, it was too much, so that's why the decision to, um, lock it was made. And, you know, really, that service is for citizens of Mount Carmel. We've had people that don't live in Mount Carmel calling, complaining about it. So, I mean, i- it's great they want to recycle, but we, we have to take care of our, our citizens first, so. Outside of that, that's really, that's all I have for today.
All right.
Yes, Tom.
In reference to what Commissioner Zimmerman said about replacing your totes?
Yes.
Uh, I was told if you call up here to have one replaced, to be sure and leave yours out.
Yes.
Because, and I didn't, I didn't think about that, because we have an ordinance that has to be off the street in twenty-four hours, so, you know, you just leave it, if you want a new one, leave your old one out so they can pick it up.
Yeah, I'll try to get a better timeframe of when they're going to replace those, because, uh, typically in the past, they come in with a trailer with several in that.
Right.
You know, and then they replace it that way. I'm not sure when that will happen, but, uh, right before council, I did send an email to, uh, Republic, and I'm trying to get some more answers and try to work with them a little more closely. Uh, because I'd say over fifty percent of the phone calls we've had in the past week are referenced trash or recycling, so we're, we're trying, and they're, they've been really good to work with. So people just need to be a little more patient.
Yeah. Since they switched days, they're having trouble getting totes back into driveways, I can tell you that.
Yes.
I, I think maybe Commissioner Meeks has seen it too, but they've, uh, they've been, um, out in the middle of the road, and, uh, I don't know if they got, assuming they have a different driver, but, um, we'd never, I've never seen that problem really in the past.
My understanding, all the dri- like, the company, all the drivers in the area are coming out one day, so your chant, you probably don't have the same driver that you did. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Waldrop.
No report.
All right, Mr. Get, I'm not here. Mr. Easter. All right, we took your glory. That's what we're supposed to do. Um, Mr. McWilliams is not here. Chief Speth.
The only thing I really have with the hot weather outside and high humidity and stuff, especially only people working outside in extreme heat, just be cautious, you know, drink plenty of fluid and stuff, so whatever, that's about all I have.
All right, thank you very much. All right, under new business consent agenda. Need consideration consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Does anybody else have anything that we need to discuss this evening?
Nope.
All right.